We'd like to welcome everyone here today. We like seeing all the smiles. It's definitely going to be a change from what we had in the past, and we appreciate you coming. We want to remind you after the meeting today that we have some refreshments, coffee. We've invited a lot of elected officials, and maybe you could stay and meet with the officials and discuss some, you know, some of your concerns or whatever you might want to discuss. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please stay standing, our new county recorder, Dawn Zinni, will, Dawn, if you would come up and say the prayer, please.
Father, in Jesus' name, we come to you today, and we are thankful for all that you've done for us. We're thankful for all the elected officials and everyone that works for the county. We're thankful for the people of Trumbull County. Father, we just pray that you guide us and protect us. Father, we pray that you protect us and guide our minds, our hearts, our eyes, our ears, and especially our tongues when we're out in the community and we are working with one another. And Lord, we just thank you, praise you, and love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dawn. Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Okay, before we start the meeting, I'd like to remind everyone, our next public workshop will be held here on Tuesday, January 14th at 10:30 a.m. And our next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 15th in this room at 10:30 a.m. Madam Clerk?
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated December 18th, 2024, and accept and approve the video recording of the meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number two is to dispense with reading the minutes of the reorganizational meeting dated January 6, 2025, and accept and approve the video recording of the meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number three is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve payment of the second installment of the Valley Vision 2050 allocation in the amount of $500,000. The goal of Valley Vision 2050 is to stabilize and expand existing businesses, increase public awareness of arts and cultural industries, increase public participation in workforce training, expand education and employment opportunities, and increase stability of nonprofit organizations and businesses. The group seeking the funds includes representatives of the East Gate Regional Council of Governments, Valley Partners, Western Reserve Port Authority, Youngstown Foundation, and the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, and to transfer monies and increase appropriations to the funds listed and to appropriate accordingly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion with this. This is the installment two of a commitment that the last board made a year ago and matching Mahoning County in kicking off Valley Vision 2050. Since then, Lake to River was initiated by the governor and under the leadership of Alexis Sweeney and her staff. We had a couple of briefings with the economic leaders of the community from East Gate, the Port Authority, the Chamber, Valley Partners, many other organizations that are involved in this. And I can tell you, I was kind of blown away at all that is happening in Mahoning Valley behind the scenes. We have businesses that want to come here. We have economic development team that is welcoming them and paving the way for them to not only come here, but be successful. And the economic future of Mahoning Valley, under the leadership of this group and the Valley Vision team, is in strong, strong hands. And I'm very, very hopeful, very excited. And I think we're going to see a different Mahoning Valley over the next five years than what we're used to. We've been beat down many, many times in the past, and it's time now, we're back up on our feet, and we're delivering the knockout blows now ourselves. And this is the place to be for the future, and we want the whole world to know Trumbull County is open for business, and all they got to do is make the phone call, and we will give them a tour and welcome them into our community.
And I want to second shadow that, Commissioner. This is a very professional group of people that we have that are representing us, and this group is going to definitely make a big difference for our residents in Trumbull County. You're going to see some major growth, and we are going to need these types of individuals, these professionals, to guide us and to enhance the, you know, the growth that we're going to experience. So I'm very much on board, Commissioner. Bernard and I were not part of this, but we want to commend the commissioners for the first half of the 500,000. Like Commissioner Malloy had said, we wanted to see, you know, what direction it was going, and it's very impressive, the direction that they're going. So I'm speaking on my behalf. I know Commissioner Bernard, you feel the same by your smiles over there, so I'll hand it over to you.
I concur with what both commissioners previously said. You know, what the, what the community wants to see is when you spend taxpayers' money, they want to see results. And hopefully, they'll see some results. As we learned yesterday in the workshop, we have one company getting ready to announce, and another one probably in the next couple of months. So progress is what it's about. We need progress. We need new people. We need new industry in here to help keep the tax base down, and I'm all for that. So congratulations to Valley Vision, and can't wait to work along with you.
Call roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Do a photo. Do a photo with the, those in attendance representing Valley Vision, please.
Madam Clerk?
Item number five is to authorize the President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute four letters of support for remediation and abatement grant applications for the Trumbull County Land Reutilization Corporation. Applications for the former Trumbull Family Fitness, former U.S. Steel, former Wellman Theater, and former Delphi Administration Building will potentially eliminate the environmental hazards posed by these contaminated sites and the corresponding risks to the community allowing for infill development with existing infrastructure to spur development and job creation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Rick Hernandez, President of the Board, for County Year 2025. Where noted to review and approve and sign the Ohio Department of Development's security role assignment forms for various grant, excuse me, various grant programs administered through the Office of Community Development. The Ohio Department of Development's Office of Community Development implemented on online grants management system to be used by grantees for programs administered by this office. The President of the Board of Commissioners is required to execute the submitted forms.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number seven is to approve and sign the submitted authorized signature card form for County Year 2025, allowing named individuals listed below to sign and submit a request for payment and status of funds report for CDBG programs implemented through the Trumbull County Planning Commission, and to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign the authorized signature card for Trumbull County, Ohio, and the signature certification form, which must be notarized, certifying the signature of the President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eight is to authorize the publication of a notice of intent to request release of funds in the Tribune Chronicle on Monday, January 13th, 2025, required by the tiered environmental review board, review record, excuse me. The Trumbull County Planning Commission's office has compiled an environmental review record for this project. Youngstown Neighborhood Development Corporation's older adult home modification program requires a categorical exclusion subject to 58.5 level of environmental review and clearance. And to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute said documents.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number nine is to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all required documents related to the grant application process, receipt and return of related documents, execution of grant documents, implementation of activities and expenditures of funds related to the administration of all ongoing or open grant programs carried over from previous years as listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 10 is to award contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Straight Line Interiors, to provide labor and materials for the Trumbull County Planning Commission's ceiling renovation project located on East Market Street in Warren. Per the technical specifications and proposals submitted before the deadline of December 13th, 2024, in the amount of $19,220, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners authorized the planning commission on November 20th, 2024, through an MOU to move forward with ARPA building repair projects.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 11 is to approve the agreement for legal services between the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office and the Howland Township Board of Trustees, authorizing the Prosecutor's Office to serve as Law Director for Howland Township for the term of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2025. The Prosecutor's Office shall be paid the sum of $42,000 annually for said services payable by the Howland Township Board of Trustees at $3,500 per month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 12 is to receive and place on file the October and November 2024 monthly financial report for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 13 is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Garrett Brady from the position of custodian, pay range three, one year, $1483 per hour, to the position of lab technician, pay range four, one year, $1605 per hour, with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective Monday, January 13th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 14 is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Stanley Bell from the position of Director of Government Affairs and Special Projects, $2491 per hour with the County Engineers Department, to the position of sewer line maintenance crew assistant, pay range six, seven years, $2151 per hour with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective Thursday, January 9th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 15 is to approve the 2024 annual county highway system mileage certification as reported by the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation in accordance with the provision specified in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 4501.04, Distribution of Revenue. The verified mileage as of December 31st, 2024 is 456.696 miles.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 16 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer, David DeCristofaro, to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, and that's J. Road Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 17 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer, David DeCristofaro, to grant the special hauling permit to move overweight equipment requested by the company listed, and that's Southern Pines Trucking, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 18 is to concur with the County Engineer, David DeCristofaro, to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles requested by the company listed, T&amp;J Hershey Trucking Limited.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 19 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, Enbridge Gas, Ohio, Eastern Natural Gas, and Lindy Paving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 20 is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the quarterly operator fleet permit requested by the person listed, and that's Daniel Gingrich.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, the next motion for point of order, did we get a reply? We did get a reply? Okay. Continue with the motion then.
To concur with the County Engineer permitting the city of Cortland to store its VAC truck inside the County Engineers' Facility, located at 3654 Meadville Road, Cortland, beginning November 2024 through April 2025, and November 2025 through April 2026, per VAC truck storage agreement.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Discussion with that.
Okay.
What did you find out there, Commissioner Bernard?
It's all covered by insurance, no cost to the county if anything happens. The city of Cortland will incur all costs.
Perfect.
So the agreement's in place. It was emailed to us last night.
Yeah, we had a workshop yesterday, very detailed workshop, like three hours. And any questions that came up, we had to hammer out, and this was one of the ones we didn't have an answer to right away. So thank you for getting that information. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for assisting.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 22 is to award proposals submitted by Power Systems Division, also known as Ohio CAT, for the two new generators for the Trumbull County Children's Service Building and Belmont Pines Building, both located at 2282 Reeves Road, Warren, in the amount of $238,157.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 23 is to appoint Ms. Melissa Baker as a member of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities for an additional four-year term commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 24 is to approve the promotion of Mr. Larry Infant as a maintenance supervisor, non-bargaining employee, with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, effective February 1st, 2025. Mr. Infant will be paid $2659 per hour with full county benefits.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 25 is to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Project Number 1-S-19, for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District in Brookfield Township. And the note, Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m., is hereby fixed as the time in the Brookfield Township Administration Building as the place for hearing of objections to or acceptance of Project Number 1-S-19.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 26 is to reappoint Mr. Keith Easton as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Service Board for an additional four-year term commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2028.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 27 is to reappoint Ms. Lori Richardson as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Service Board for an additional four-year period commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 28 is to amend Commissioner's regular meeting agenda dated January 12th, 2022, that read to reappoint Mr. Kevin Gavitt as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Service Board for an additional three-year period commencing January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2024. Amendment is necessary to extend Mr. Gavitt's term by one year to December 31st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 29 is to adopt a resolution of the County of Trumbull, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial America 250 Ohio. Whereas the Ohio Legislature and the Governor created America 250 Ohio in 2021 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States and Ohio's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas America 250-Ohio hopes to engage all Ohioans in all 88 counties through their many signature and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the next several years by inspiring future leaders and celebrating all Ohioans' contributions to the nation over the past 250 years. Whereas by adoption of America 250-Ohio Resolution, we hope to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate. Now therefore, be it resolved, and it hereby resolved, that the County of Trumbull hereby endorses America 250-Ohio in their mission to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate every Ohioan in every county. And it is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the municipal legislative delegation and America 250-Ohio Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 30 is to authorize change order number one for professional engineering services associated with Emanuel Community Care Center Masonry and Window Improvements Project in the amount of $10,000 for the contract with GPD Group, and to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of County Commissioners, to sign change order number one. President of the Board of County Commissioners, to sign change order number one. Change order number one is a net increase of $10,000, revising the total contract amount from $10,000 to $20,000. The increase is necessary as planned preparation uncovered additional requirements needed to meet building code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our regular county business. Commissioner Malloy, would you like to?
Um, yeah, we have a few people here in the crowd. Mr. President, I'd like, if they could possibly come up and introduce themselves and some of their staffers here. I guess we can start, I see Judge Scott Lynch, who is our Court of Appeals Judge. Would you like to say a few words of the microphone here?
Am I on? There we go. All right. Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Malloy for extending the invitation for me to come by. I live in eastern Georgia County, and I guess it was sometime on the campaign trail, I'd come to St. Patrick's, which was recently rebuilt after the fire, and the bishop was there, and I shook the bishop's hand, and he said, "Boy, you have a Cleveland accent." So the Court of Appeals, which is where I will be joining on February 10th, is a large district. It's all of northeast Ohio. It's five counties, but we feel very privileged that Trumbull County is the home to the court for the district. So I will be here regularly, and just want to say thank you to Commissioner Malloy for extending the invitation. I was the only, I'm still judge-elect, but I was the only judge or judge-elect on the court that was able to be here today. I understood there was an elected officials reception, so I appreciate the invitation to be here.
Thank you, Judge.
Congratulations to you also.
Yes, congratulations.
How about Sheriff Wilson? Sheriff Wilson, that sounds good.
Sheriff Michael Wilson, Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Commissioners, good morning. Ms. Blair, good morning to you as well. Thank you for having us. First of all, I appreciate the voters voting me into Sheriff's Office, and we're going to do great things. We've already started, it's our third day, and the culture's already changing. So we're happy to give positive reports so far. A lot of great people work at our office, and I'd like to acknowledge all of them as a group right now. Great group of people. With me today, if you'd like me to announce my staff?
Please.
Chief Deputy Dill McDermann. Major Doug Bavaknik. Major David Bobby, jail administrator. Captain John Alberti. Captain David Ruggiero. And Chief Financial Officer Mark Manning.
Welcome, welcome.
Also, I would like to invite the board over to the Sheriff's Offices at your convenience for a walkthrough and a tour, and we have some items we'd like to go over with you, and we'd appreciate you to come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And I know, I've known Mike as a township trustee. We spent a lot of time in Columbus together for Township Trustee Association, and I'll just never forget when you looked at me and said, "I think I'm going to run for county sheriff." I said, "Boy, that was only what, a year and a half out or two?" And look, he made it as county sheriff. Let's give him a round of applause. You, as well as anybody knows, you know, it can be very abusive when you're running for an office, and you withstood the, you know, those elements, and much appreciated that you did.
Thank you for that, and I will say, it wasn't just me. We had a whole team behind us that just get to where we're at. Everybody worked really hard, as you guys did as well, and I appreciate you guys mentioning that, and you, Chairman, for mentioning that as well. And I'm just looking forward to working with you guys and improving Trumbull County, because that's the goal. First of all, safety's paramount. Second of all, is working together to accomplish that goal. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you, Sheriff.
And I just want to point out that Cardinal Mooney High School has three elected officials now in Trumbull County, including Judge Lucci and Mr. Wilson and myself, so.
Champion High School has one.
There you go. Okay, how about Dawn Zinni, our county recorder?
Hi, I just want to take a minute to thank everyone. And during this whole campaign, I feel like I've met a lot of people, made some good friends. I feel like good friends and colleagues, some of the commissioners and other elected officials. Today, I brought with me my administrative assistant attorney, Jason Kement. And then a nice, young gentleman that has been here for almost 25 years now. I have promoted him to Chief Deputy Recorder, Fred Moore. He has been waiting for this for a long time. I've had a lot of people come to me and tell me that great things about him, and I have so much faith in him that he's going to do well, and we're getting settled in, and I just appreciate him taking that position, and I just want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Dawn.
Burger Courts Randy Law.
That's a 79. That was random. I want to thank everybody, and we're looking forward to working with the commissioners and all the departments as needed. I know I have big shoes to fill. Karen did a great job, created a tremendous staff that I'm inheriting, and it's made a smooth transition. And I want to extend a special thanks to Karen for the help I got in transitioning. I can't imagine walking over there Monday morning with what we all went through on Monday morning and Monday afternoon, and it probably still going on. But without her help over the course of time in transitioning since the election, it really would have been crazy. So I do want, I know she's not here, but I do want to extend a special thanks there, because that's the way it should be in all offices. We're serving the people. Again, I look forward to it. I got a great staff. I did bring two of my three appointees in the back. The new title deputy will be Stacy Smith. She may be very... Well, she's popular. May be very familiar to most of you. She's put in, rumor has it, about 28 years in the county so far. It's hard to believe she started when she was six, but looking forward to great things over there. She's got big shoes to fill too, and we're very excited about that. Also with me is my new administrative assistant, John Blue. Worked formerly for the county in Mahoning County, so he has a lot of experience there, and that's been tremendous. My new chief deputy is Devon Stanley. I have him working elsewhere today, covering for me, actually. So we're excited to have him. He's an attorney and going to bring a lot to the job. Again, once again, thank you and look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
I guess I'd also like to acknowledge Administrator Panalone from Howland, Trustee Dylan from Howland. We also have Trustee Peg from Vienna, and our Fair Board President, Barry. Barry, why don't you introduce your Fair Board members here? We have not met them yet.
My name's Barry Brown, I'm president of Trumbull County Fairgrounds. I brought with me today Mike Adie, he's on the board with us, and Micah Nolan. His grandpa was with us for multiple, multiple years. President, if you might all know him, Tom Sawyer. This is his grandson, 19 years old, fresh blood. I mean, if you want to do my job, you got to surround yourself with good people. This board is fantastic. And I just can't thank the commissioners, the past ones, the ones we got, the two for the future. We just came back from conference down in Columbus, 88 fairs. I'm in every meeting, and nobody got the relationship we got. This staff he's got is amazing. I mean, I don't want to mention names because I'm going to forget somebody, but everybody we dealt with down here through grants, anything, getting quotes, building inspector, it's just been fantastic for us. So I just want to express, come out to the fair, or the July 8th through the 15th. I'm telling you, you won't be disappointed. We've got the place spiffed up. We just got a $500,000 grant from Sandy O'Brien and Nick Santuzzi to redo the whole grandstand. And with the grants we got and the help with the commissioners, there's buildings with new rots we're getting. We just put a $240,000 bathroom in last fall, and now we're putting up an $840,000 replacement 4-H building, which will consist of showers, warming kitchen, pavilion, observation deck for the ring. These 4-H kids have been holding their breath for three years, but it'll be fantastic. But please come out and thank these guys.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
If I can mention to you, Barry's doing a fantastic job out there, and he has a wonderful staff and the commissioners. On behalf of the commissioners, you know, you're going to get support from us, and just want to thank you for taking that position there. And I'm still looking forward to going walleye fishing with you, you know.
And I'll make a note too. How old's your mother now, Barry? 92, and she harvested a deer this year in West Virginia, so God bless her, many more years for her. Thing that takes care of our special guests that don't normally come. We got our department heads here, we've got some of the public, and I guess, Rick, now you can entertain comments from the public.
Yeah, so for the betterment of Trumbull County, if you have any comments, and you'd like to step up to the podium and give your name, please, at this time you could do so. Hi.
Hi there, Kimberly Garrett, Deputy Director for the Warren Trumbull County Public Library. Like to start by congratulating and welcome you to your newly elected position as commissioners. I'm here today to follow up on a few pieces of email correspondence that likely got lost in the end-of-the-year shuffle that our executive director had sent, starting back in October. We are currently down to Board of Trustees as their term expired on December 31st. We have a Board of Trustees that's made up of seven members, and I'm here today to request the reappointment of Mr. James Duff, who's been a very well-respected and trusted member of our Board of Trustees for the past 25 years. His leadership and strategic insight have been invaluable to the library, and respectfully, we would like to request the reappointment for a new seven-year term that would run through December 31st, 2031. That doesn't even sound real, does it? And additionally, we would like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Darrell Rogers to the Library Board of Trustees to fill the remaining three years that are left of the term previously held by Mr. Franklin Manios, who had to resign unfortunately due to some medical issues at the end of December. But we're very confident that Mr. Rogers' appointment would further enhance our board's ability to serve the community. Both Mr. Duff and Mr. Rogers bring unique strengths and shared passion for supporting literacy, lifelong learning, and public service in Trumbull County. So if the board could, please consider this and get these appointments and reappointments on the agenda as soon as possible. As you know, it's very difficult to do any sort of library business when we're down to, out of our seven trustee appointments. So I did write letters and included a resume and cover letter for Mr. Rogers, and I'd be happy to furnish anything, any other information that you might request.
Did you have any other applicants for those terms?
We did not.
Okay, with hearing that and hearing what she said, I'd like to make a motion from the floor that we reappoint Mr. Duff to the term ending 2031, and we appoint Mr. Rogers to fill the remaining term of the board member that we lost.
Second motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
I thank you so much. Thank you.
Don't need to be on the agenda next week, huh?
No. Take care of it now with that. That's very important. Library workers work really hard, takes a special person to do that, so.
Be happy to give you a tour.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Any one want to come to the podium? Okay, well, I want to, before we adjourn the meeting, invite you to all stay and talk to some of your elected officials. There are refreshments. I think there's, is it, I don't think it's only donuts, Commissioner. I heard there's some desserts, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, so you're more than welcome to partake, and we have coffee back there, and just want to thank you all for coming. It's been a lightning meeting. This is the first public meeting, and I hope that you all can see a difference in this board, and you will experience the difference in a positive moving forward for Trumbull County. We look forward as commissioners to serve the people that voted us here to do so. So thank you, and at that, I'd need a motion to adjourn.
Well, we do, before we do that, we do, we did advertise this at 11:30 for the elected officials, so hang around, there'll be more coming that are probably going to be here at 11:30. So I see some in the hallway, but 11:30, we'll kick it off now, but don't leave till the other ones get here, please. And with that, I'll make a motion that we... That's up to you if you would like to do that, Mr. Chairman.
We'll entertain a phone line if there is anybody there, if you'd like.
Star six, they can unmute themselves.
Hello, Carl Clemens.
Hi, Carl.
Hey, Happy New Year to everybody. Congratulations to all the newly elected officials. As a longtime advocate for the county, I've been doing my part to try to, four years ago when I ran for commissioner, I, all I wanted to do was people to join Team Trumbull, because all you guys are powerhouses in yourself, but we can be the dynasty that Commissioner Malloy talked about. We got a long way to go, but if we just work together, we can achieve any goal that we want to. And nobody gets everything they want. Everybody stay humble. Remember that they are, we're all serving somebody else. We're all here to help each other. But Trumbull County can be a powerhouse, and with Vision 25 and everything that we have going on right now, there are a lot of good things. We need to go ahead and strengthen that and support that, and try to connect with the counties around us, so together we can be much stronger. Congratulations to all you guys, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Amen to that, and we appreciate your call.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? We're good? That's a good sign. We might be doing our job correctly.
We almost too quick. We caught them off guard.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Does that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn?
I will second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.